Thank you to our local programming sponsors.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Precinct 4, Precinct 5 Candidate Forum. Thank you for Laura Scott for creating this space for the community to learn a little bit more about the candidates. That's really good. And thank you to Jeff and the East Hampton Media, East Hampton Media staff. It's really important to see the every night after the forums. This video is going to be available on YouTube and their channel, I think, is on the easthamptonmedia.org. It's going to be there, so feel free to share that in your social media. It's important for the community to know the candidates and know what they're thinking and what is going to be their priorities for the community. We have some instructions that is really important. The questions asked tonight were submitted by the public. They have been ranked in order, first by the frequency with which the question was asked, and secondly, by the date of submission. All questions were here with the candidate in advance. So that means that they know the questions. And each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. The candidate is going to look through sometimes to Laura because she's going to have the time. And she has different colors, so that way people will find out that it is yellow. Be careful, time is almost done. East Hampton Media is filming the event this evening, and the video will be available for tomorrow. Please be silent, your cell phones, please mute it. That's really important to respect not just the candidate, to respect the people who are next to you. It's really important, please put in silence. And I hope you enjoy this evening. And we are hoping that you hold your applause for the end of the event. It is possibly, depends on the answers of the candidate. You feel necessarily you're going to want to applaud. I encourage you to wait until the last question and when we have the closings to do so. Thank you.
And then we will also have reading of the bios that were submitted by each of the candidates.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Powell Wilson, and I have been a resident of East Hampton for, gosh, I've lost count, maybe 27 years or so.
My name is Omar Gomez. I was a city councilor, precinct two, I was the city council president by two, four terms. And now I'm your state rep. If you need something, please reach out to me. All right, this is the candidates. I'm going to start with Amanda, Amanda Newton. Amanda Newton is a lifelong resident of East Hampton. After Amanda graduated as a valedictorian from East Hampton High School, she earned her bachelor's degree in Massachusetts teaching license from Manholy College. She then began her career as a public school teacher in Springfield, while completing her master's degree in education at Westfield State University. Amanda currently teaches third grade at Smith College Laboratory Schools, where she mentors and trains pre-service teacher for Massachusetts Legacy. As model of the second grader, Amanda balanced her career with the challenge of raising a child in a changing world. She is running for city council precinct four to bring an intergenerational perspective, to look at government and to represent the voice of the PC family, especially women balancing careers, parenthood, caregiving, and community life.
Bob Parent and his wife, Lois, have lived at the end of South Street for almost 35 years and treasure our unique city and everything that it has to offer. Bob has spent his entire 42-year career working with communities across Massachusetts as a consulting engineer, public works director, acting town manager, city engineer, capital projects manager, board member, and volunteer. He's collaborated with staff and officials at all levels of government and knows how to work with elected officials, boards, staff, and the public to get things done. As a believer in public service and good government, he will apply his experience and reasoned approach to achieve our common goals of good schools, affordable housing, reasonable tax rates, safe streets, a clean, sustainable environment, and opportunities for the young, old, and everyone in between.
Tamara Smith. Tamara Smith has been a resident of East Hampton for the past 18 years. She has served as the city council for three full terms. The first two as a large city councilor, and this last term as precinct five city councilor. Tamara is a professor at Westfield State University, where she teaches anthropology, health science, and sociology courses. Tamara has five children, all grew up in East Hampton, and attend East Hampton Public Schools. She has served on the school council for Center and Pepin School and is on the board of directors for East Hampton Neighbors, a nonprofit that supports aging in place through neighborly connections.
Kathy Wazinski. Kathy has lived in East Hampton for over 30 years. Moving here after meeting her husband, Kathy coached soccer for her daughter and was a Girl Scout leader. She has extensive experience in human services, working with adults and children with disabilities. Kathy advocates for individuals in areas such as education, medical, vocational, and housing needs. Kathy collaborates with local agencies to support community living, including assisting people to move out of nursing facilities. Kathy has provided testimony to the state legislature on a variety of topics. She is trained in critical incident management and has responded to emergencies, including the Munson tornado. She has also trained local police in mental health first aid. Kathy has experience in budget development, grant writing, and fundraising. As a self-proclaimed data nerd, she has experience in analyzing and managing budgets. Kathy is the chair of the East Hampton Republican City Committee and is a founding member of the East Hampton Active Citizens, and spends her free time attending city meetings. Kathy graduated from UMass Amherst with a degree in communication disorders and did her graduate work at Westfield State in applied behavioral analysis. She believes in government accountability, transparency, and fiscal responsibility, and advocates for preserving our semi-rural community and our natural resources.
Now, we're going to start with the questions, and we're going to start with Amanda. But before starting with Amanda, I just want to say to all four, thank you. Thank you for stepping up and running for office. It's not easy, especially for those wondering who's running for the first time. I know it's a lot of nerve. I was there a few years ago. So I just want you to understand that we are here for all you four, and we appreciate what you're doing. First question, I will start with Amanda. If elected, what will you top priority be and why?
Here we go. Thank you for the question, and I want to thank you, the moderators and the audience for coming and for e-media for recording this tonight, so thank you. My first priority would be keeping East Hampton affordable, so that families, working people, and seniors can stay in the community that they love. I will do this by supporting new housing options, especially solutions like 385 Main Street that combine housing with preservation. I will also advocate for statewide legislation that protects tenants from sudden rent spikes. My second priority is supporting East Hampton's new climate action plan and initiatives that help bring that plan to life. I am especially invested in improving walkability and bikeability by implementing the Safe Routes to School and Complete Streets plans. This should help reduce the number of cars on the road. Finally, I want to simplify communication with residents in precinct four. I want to make it easy for residents to follow projects as they move forward and understand how decisions affect their everyday lives. I intend to leverage my skills to make communication more frequent and digestible. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar and Jeanne. If elected, you're city councilor for precinct four. My top priority would be fixing the South Street and Maple Street intersection. We all know that it's a problem. It's been a big problem for a long time. There have been numerous accidents over the years, and unfortunately, a couple of fatalities there. It's been complicated, unfortunately, because Mass DOT owns part of the intersection. And because of that, we have to comply with Mass DOT's rigid requirements regarding what intersections qualify for traffic signals and which ones do not. Getting over that, I believe, is going to require a creative solution. That creative solution might involve the city taking on responsibility for a greater piece of Main Street, so we actually own not only up to the intersection, but all the way past the intersection, possibly some distance towards Southampton. And we'll probably end up having to pay for 100% of the cost of that signal because Mass DOT adamantly will not pay for something that does not meet their standards. First step in putting that together would be put together a team, assemble all the data, get together with the mayor, again, assisting the mayor, DPW, district staff, statewide staff, getting involved with Senator Vellis and bringing Representative Gomez in as well. Sit down and talk about the problem and try to come to a solution. And I think with my experience and background, I'm in the ideal position to make this happen. Thank you.
Tamara?
I've been thinking about how to answer this question because I'm the only one of the four of us who is currently sitting on city council. And so I'm already invested in doing a lot of things moving forward with the city. So I'm going to talk about what some of those things are. On the ordinance subcommittee right now, we're looking at both short-term housing rentals as well as long-term rent and some of the issues with not being able to afford East Hampton. In my particular precinct, precinct five, we have a lot more homes and we have fewer rentals on the whole. And so immediately, I want to make sure that residents within our precinct can also afford to stay within East Hampton. We have two pockets, both new homeowners with very high mortgages as well as homeowners who have lived in the precinct for a long time. Both of these groups have a lot of stakes within precinct five. And moving forward, I just want to facilitate appropriate conversations that move us all forward together in a way that we can find our common ground and protect the resources that we have in precinct five, such as our aquifer and green spaces, and also meet the social needs of our precinct as a whole.
Kathy?
I want to thank everybody for coming. My top priorities are accountability and transparency, fiscal responsibility, and preserving our resources and semi-rural community. As a child, I had the opportunity to get involved in the political process in advocating against the bottle bill. The bottle bill moved us away from glass bottles to plastic, and we all know how that turned out. Glass manufacturers tried to fight the bottle bill by highlighting the unintended consequences, the plastic pollution, because plastic is not recyclable, and the loss of jobs. The glass manufacturing jobs have nearly gone away completely. We need a diverse knowledge base to analyze budgets and housing options and zoning ordinance and prevent unintended consequences like we saw with the bottle bill. We want to look at important decisions and try to reduce the potential damage to our aquifer, overcrowding, overburden of our infrastructure, increasing rents, and higher cost of living. It is really important that we have a diverse knowledge base and diverse perspective in order to analyze issues before the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. For question two, we will start with Bob Parent. This is the question. Questioner writes, "Are you familiar with the Park Street side path Safe Routes to School proposal? And if so, what are your thoughts about how the significantly widened sidewalk should be addressed regarding the clearing of snow and ice? The majority of property owners on Park Street are retired, and the additional physical labor for the much wider sidewalk will be a potential hardship."
Thank you. Yes, I'm definitely very familiar with this project, and I'd love to talk to anybody for more than 90 seconds after this meeting, if you'd like. I started talking to the city about this project in February of 2022. I reached out to Jeff Bag and asked Jeff what the city's plans were for maintenance of this side path. It's a great concept, but it comes with some impact, obviously. Every project has impact. At that point, Jeff indicated that the city was in some early discussions, possibly about having the city maintain the side path. The DPW had recently bought a sidewalk plow. He also indicated there were some discussions with Williston, possibly picking up a responsibility for part of the side path maintenance. I know what it takes. I maintained 300 feet of regular sidewalk. I maintained 75 feet of side path that was constructed as part of the Mountain View School project right now. So it's a lot of work. I enjoy it. I'm still in reasonably good shape. I can do it, but I know not everybody can do it. So I definitely do not believe that it's reasonable to expect the residents to maintain it and expect that the city needs to really think this thing through and have an answer before the city goes to those residents and looks for easements, both these temporary and permanent easements that are likely going to be required to construct that path.
Thank you. Tamara?
When I think about how kids are able to get to school, by what means they're able to get to school, this is actually a difficult question for precinct five because to be able to take a bus to school, we have to pay $500, or I'm sorry, $300 per semester. Having five kids, that was a substantial cost within my family, and we did not have sidewalks that could have taken to safely go to school instead. I'm all in favor of universal design. I think universal design and wider sidewalks not only will help children get to school, but help their caregivers actually access those paths as well. And I think sometimes we make it the school against the world. And we actually have quite a few nonprofits and volunteer groups within East Hampton, and we need to bring these folks to the table as well when we're looking at solutions because a few folks who are unable to plow their driveways could create a lot of social isolation for the individual. But having a few people who are able to do that really opens up the doors and opens up East Hampton to that individual. So I'm in support of this plan.
Thank you. And Kathy?
I think the first thing we need to consider is whether widening the sidewalks here is an infrastructure priority for us. We have a number of essential infrastructure that needs to be upgraded and fixed. And I would need to see some data that showed the demand and the use would be of such volume that would make this a viable project for us to spend our money on and then to maintain. Because unfortunately, we've had a series of projects that we've done that later have not been maintained. If it is built, I would expect that there would be creative solutions for clearing the sidewalks, including potentially the city or some of the other options that have been noted by the other panelists. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amanda?
I'm really excited that East Hampton is striving to create safe routes to school for all children as part of their strategic planning. Park Street feels really unsafe. I actually remember as a kid walking to my friend's house from Whitebrook, and it was awful. And it's still that way. People avoid riding on it as a result. And we need complete streets so that it's accessible for all wheels, not just bikes, but wheelchairs as well. We actually are very fortunate that we have secured a $1.9 million grant from MassDOT, which is the entire estimated cost of the project. So this allows us to make a really big improvement without raising taxes and without spending a lot of taxpayers' money. If we weren't to connect it to the manhunt trail and make it a side path, we actually wouldn't have gotten that grant. And it would cost us more to simply replace an existing sidewalk in the future. So therefore, I am definitely in support of this project. As for the ice and snow, the path is going to essentially be equivalent to a bike path in width and use. So I absolutely think it should be the responsibility of DPW to clear the snow and ice.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody to silence their cell phone, please. We're going to start this question with Tamara. How do you feel about adopting MGL 321, 321 Chapter 4, Section 32? MGL means Massachusetts Unitar Law, which will allow the city council by two-third vote, following a majority vote of the school committee, to increase the total amount appropriated in support of the school department?
Okay, thank you for that question, Omar. When the school committee came before the city council a few sessions ago to talk about this as a possibility for East Hampton. And one of the first things that I immediately thought was that this needs a lot more research. This is a law that East Hampton chose not to put in effect when we first became a city. And I would like to have a lot more understanding of the different stakeholders within East Hampton, both those who would approve this plan and those who would not. Essentially, what this plan would do would be that if the school committee voted that they needed to have more of a budget than what the offer, that what the mayor put into the existing budget, that with a two-thirds vote of the city council, we would be able to force that to come to pass. It would be the city council that would be making the choice of which other departments would be losing those funds instead of the schools. And at a time where we have a future in front of us, where we have a lot of domino effects about to happen. So for example, even look at the cost of health insurance for municipal employees. I'd need to take extreme caution with a change this big simply because we are entering times such as not having SNAP benefits starting November 1st, where there is a lot of economic uncertainty within our community. Thank you.
I would not support adapting this Mass General Law. In an ideal world, all of our city departments would have a budget that could meet the needs of the citizens and pay our staff a wonderful working wage. The school budget currently makes up about 64% of our overall budget, and I would be concerned that other department budgets would be negatively impacted should this law be adapted. I would support, as a community, looking at a charter amendment to our budget process. Thank you.
As you can imagine, I support the schools wholeheartedly, and I want them to be fully funded. I'm open to looking at this change, but I do have a lot of questions and concerns about different scenarios. I don't think it's a magic bullet for getting our schools funded. As Tamara mentioned, we need to have a balanced budget every single year. We can't avoid that. And the mayor is responsible for setting the overall city budget. A city council can't raise the overall budget. All they can do is cut the budget. Only the mayor can actually increase the whole budget, that's all the departments. So like Tamara said, if the city council were to raise the school budget, we have to cut other parts of the budget. At that point, a majority of the council would also need to agree on what to cut. And since there is, it's a pretty tight turnaround between when you get the budget and when it needs to be approved, there's a good chance that if we were to do that, we might not end up passing the budget on time. I think that more effective ways might be sending the budget back to the mayor and advocating with the community for a higher school budget when we're not able to reach a level funding for that year. Thank you.
If you'd asked me two weeks ago what I thought, I would have been a definite opposed to adopting this Mass General Law. I'm now in the I'm-not-certain phase. Oftentimes, being an engineer, I try to collect information. I try to look at facts. I try to analyze things, and I try to keep my mind open until I have all the information that I need to make a decision. I've started to explore what other communities have done, have talked to other communities that have adopted this amendment. And at least one of them indicated that they've actually found it to be fairly helpful. Not that they've ever put it into play, but it has changed the dynamic between the mayor and the city council when it comes to talking about the school budget and has made the process a more productive process. That doesn't mean I'm done collecting information. I'm done doing my research to really come up with an opinion. But I have shifted from where I was originally. As everybody else has said, if the city council, if we did adopt this regulation, the council would have to make a very difficult decision about where to cut. And that's not easy, and that will likely create problems with other departments. So it's not something anybody should ever consider doing lightly, but it may be a tool that's helpful to coming to a well-budgeted or well-arrived-at budget at the end of the day.
Thank you. Oh.
No, yes, no?
Test, test, test. Just need to speak to, okay, got it. Thank you.
Nope, that's fine. Okay, this next question with Kathy starting. The question is, "How do you plan to understand the majority perspectives of your constituents to best advocate as a counselor?"
For the last two years, I have hosted coffee chats and Pizza and Politics monthly to allow for engagement with citizens and helping people to become informed about what's going on in the city. I will continue to do both of those events monthly, and will look at adding a precinct five specific gathering as well to encourage precinct residents to meet with me and express their concerns and become engaged with our city. Additionally, I would encourage that city meetings be all hybrid, including both in person and in Zoom. Oftentimes, people want to be able to participate and can't get to meetings. I think that having a variety of times available for important meetings that require citizen input so that they're not all happening at 5 o'clock would be really important. Unfortunately, the voices of many citizens are lost or ignored currently. I've experienced that firsthand with city councilors rolling their eyes or, in one case, falling asleep when I get up to speak. I have heard from citizens across the city that they are afraid to speak up, and this cannot happen. Every voice has value. Every voice should be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
I believe that as a precinct counselor, it's super important to understand the needs of the constituents because you're elected for that precinct. If elected, I plan to offer regular meeting hours so I can understand residents' needs and hear their ideas. I want to gather perspectives before making decisions, especially when it directly affects precinct four residents, such as with traffic, changes, or new construction. I do have progressive values and believe in standing up for marginalized groups. I believe in standing up for immigrants regardless of citizenship status. I believe that Black Lives Matter and that LGBTQ rights are human rights. There may be times when the majority viewpoint may not reflect my progressive values. And part of being a leader is standing up for what I believe in, even if it's not popular. So in those moments, I will vote with integrity and conviction. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a good question and a problem that all elected officials deal with and one that I've dealt with for the past 13 years, working directly for cities and towns, is that you hear from the public, but you typically hear from a very small... So you have to work, you have to make yourself accessible, you have to make your email available, you have to be responsive, you have to get out. When I was in East Long Meadow as DPW director, I said I needed to meet every single person in town, so when somebody called, I went out, I met with them face-to-face. It takes work, it does take understanding the demographics of your precincts, so sometimes it means taking a look at, for instance, a good resource is the street list that lists every resident in town, lists their occupation, lists their age. That gives you a good understanding of who is out there, because you're not going to talk to everybody, as much as you'd like to be able to talk to everybody. And then when you get information from someone who does step forward, you try to take a look at that information and say, how might that apply to everyone else? And what are the things that might apply to everybody within the precinct? And try to work on those. But it's difficult, because you, again, would like to engage with everyone, but you typically engage with a very small piece of the electorate.
Thank you. Tamara?
So I have a history as a city counselor, particularly when I was a city counselor at large, that I wasn't scared to talk about things that might be divisive within our city, but people were talking about them. And oftentimes, I would hear miscommunications and misinformation about a lot of topics. So dating all the way back to 2017, when everything came up with Sanctuary City, there was a lot of misinformation out there. Some people were assuming that Sanctuary City meant Refugee City, for example. I held an educational forum at the community center at East Works by myself to make sure that everybody could understand the terminology that we were using and understand what was at stake, regardless of whether or not they agreed with me. I ended up pulling that from consideration because it was so divisive within our community, and I also looked at plastic bags at one point. I also held an educational forum for residents to understand both sides of that issue and did a lot of research to understand the issue myself. We ultimately, when I was in council, decided that that was also one that had good science on both sides. And as a city with 16,000 people with no dump, we decided not to take that at that level. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. This question, we're gonna start with Amanda, but first, because we are having some issues with one of the microphones, we're gonna take a quick break, so stay tuned.
All right, so I'm gonna have you guys share this, and I'm gonna take this. Okay, okay. No problem.
Questioner writes, and we're gonna start with Amanda. As a parent of two middle-school students... Thank you. I'm gonna start again. Questioner writes, as a parent of two middle-school students, I am interested in your view on public education. Like other areas, students, my kids would like access to oral language classes in middle school. Honor courses, hand-on elective, are more scheduled options. Many of their peers seeking these same opportunities are choosing now to other schools. How will you work with the school department and our new superintendent to close some of those gaps and keep more families in our city?
As an educator of 18 years, this question means a lot to me. I strongly support our public schools and believe that we must provide our students with challenging and engaging learning opportunities beyond the core subjects. I currently work in a laboratory school designing curriculum that emphasizes hands-on learning, which provides me with a unique perspective. I know how important it is for students to have diverse learning opportunities. I also have full faith in our new superintendent, Dr. Bosch, and her ability to think creatively to enrich our schools. I will be supportive and give her time to identify ways to offer new learning opportunities for students. At the same time, I want to emphasize that we need to have more choices for all students in the city, not just neurotypical students. Neurodiverse and special needs kids also observe and benefit from enrichment opportunities. If elected, I can be a counselor who can act as a liaison between the school department and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. The biggest thing that the council can do relative to this question starts with the funding discussion. That is really where the council and the mayor's responsibility lies most significantly. The mayor, as you may know, also sits as a member of the school committee, the city council does not. The 1980, 1993 Educational Reform Act created a hard separation between school departments and city government, for good reason, I believe. It means that the school committee has primary responsibility for policy, the school committee hires the superintendent, the superintendent runs the schools. The council doesn't have direct involvement with the school department, nor do I recommend that the council attempts to get directly involved with the school department, because that's not the council's job. Working in government, it's important that everybody understands where their lane is, and there have been problems in the past where people try to jump into things that are not their responsibilities. So it's important to do our jobs very well, and then let the others that have the primary responsibility do their jobs as well also.
I agree with the first two respondents that this feels more like a school committee question than a city counselor question. So I think the first thing that I would do would be to be supportive of our school committee members and acknowledge that they are also elected and follow their lead when it comes to this. But I have a unique perspective, because I am the chair of the Appointment Subcommittee, and we're in the middle of a complete overhaul of the appointments process. And as a college educator, the one thing that we are looking for is civic engagement from our students earlier on in the process. Now, I have a son who was in the We the, one of the We the People winning teams, but I'm very aware that a lot of students wouldn't necessarily want to be on a stage competing at that level. But we have 30 boards and committees across the city, and it is time to have an internship appointment for students to be able to learn firsthand about the ongoings in the city through the different boards. And I would like to see those same students be the ones who are relaying some of the information from the different boards and committees to the full council...
Uh oh.
To the full council as a way to get them to practice public speaking early on and really build their civic engagement skills.
Nicely done, Tamara. I would encourage our new superintendent to poll parents who have polled their children out of district. I believe that some of the reasons they left the district go beyond just the curriculum. And it would be helpful for us to understand why students are leaving to go to other districts and to homeschooling. That being said, we have amazing teachers. My daughter also was on one of the East Hampton We the People teams. Ms. Brown and many of the other teachers in our district are some of the best in the state. And I would encourage us to ask these questions of our teachers. And look at non-governmental grants that might be available, and again, that's the school committee's job. I think we encourage our teachers to show what they have to give us and really support them to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Bob. What are the most viable safety improvements we can make in the district? What is your position on the flock cameras? Should the police be able to install these without mayoral or council oversight?
I'll take the flock camera topic first, because I think that's the quickest and the easiest answer, which is absolutely the police department and the police chief report to the mayor. So the mayor has oversight of any camera installation and should have oversight of that. That is not the council's responsibility. Potentially, if the council is concerned about it, it could work on developing an ordinance regarding use of surveillance cameras in town. Other communities have done that. I wouldn't recommend that at this point, because I think we really want to give our new mayor a chance to work with the police chief and come up with a strategy that makes sense. So that's where I would start. Relative to safety improvements, oh yes, there needs the oversight. Safety improvements, I've talked about South and Main Street already. Couple of other places close to home for me is the roundabout at Mountain View School. There is no street light over that roundabout, there's no rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks. And you try to cross that at nighttime, as I do just about every night, it's a little bit scary. Another location within the precinct would be putting a rapid flashing beacon at the crosswalk, at the bike path crossing on South Street. Again, it can be pretty difficult getting across there at some point. Speed control is the big topic that I'd love to talk to people about, and again, it's more than a 90-second topic. It's difficult to control drivers and control driver speeds. There are strategies you can put in place that can be effective in some cases, but you can't put them in place everywhere, because they can become extremely expensive. So that is it. So speed control is difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara?
I think some of the most visible improvements to safety have been through our police. When I first moved into East Hampton, we had an all-male police force. We now have a lot more gender diversity within the force. And we also not, used to not have police that were walking around the city, and that's another very recent change that really has created a difference in our safety and perceptions of safety around the community. I believe that the safest community is a bonded community that has a relationship with its police force. So I'm very happy to see our public police making the effort for coffee with a cop, for cookouts with a cop, and make it really known that they're there to listen to you and be able to talk, particularly if you're scared about a family member and how they would be treated by the police if they were to come across them. That communication is essential for safety, and I wholeheartedly support these changes that our police force has taken. I do not agree with flock lights. I think we've made so many efforts to make sure that we are a community that is humanized and working together through all of the ways that I just mentioned. And the moment we bring it back to a flock light, we take all of the personnel and all of the community out of that and instead make a decision for a city of 16,000 that's more appropriate for a city of 100,000 with the flock lights.
Thank you. Kathy?
I think I'll start with those flock lights as well. I don't believe that we should have them in our city. I will, would like to hear from our new police chief and our new mayor when they are, have an opportunity to work together to see if they have a different opinion. In terms of safety improvements for Precinct 5, there are a number of sidewalk improvements that need to be made, and also some infrastructure improvements in terms of our roads. The biggest safety concern, I think, in Precinct 5 is the lack of lighting. We do not have practically any streetlights in Precinct 5. Most of them were taken out a number of years ago, and the darkness makes it really challenging at night to be able to walk around the neighborhood safely. So I would like to talk to citizens about what would work for them in terms of creative lighting strategies, without also disturbing people's sleep by adding in bright lights all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda?
As Bob mentioned earlier, I think the biggest safety concern right now in Precinct 4 is the South and Main Street intersection, for sure. There's been many accidents and near accidents there, and because it is a state road, the city and state are going to need to work together to fix that. If elected to be the precinct counselor, I think I would have a responsibility to go and talk with the state rep and advocate the best that I can to get that fixed. The other big concern that I have in our precinct is a lack of sidewalks on the really busy streets, where people just fly down the streets and there's not even any sidewalks there. This is pretty common on Strong Street. So, sorry. It just doesn't feel safe to be walking and biking there. So I think a priority would be finding those stretches of road where there is no sidewalk, there's not even much of a shoulder, and adding sidewalks so that it is safe in those areas. And then I think another piece is fixing sightlines by trimming bushes and trees that block visibility. That's a less expensive fix, but it would make a big difference at intersections. Finally, the flock cameras. I definitely think that we need to have oversight. I think probably the best bet at this point, because we've already had some stuff happening with them, would be for a city council to go ahead and try to make an ordinance about the flock cameras.
These questions, we're gonna start with Tamara. Questioner writes, we need a zoning overlay to protect the wildlife corridor from Norito Park, over Mountain View School, across Park Street, and then the bypass to Route 10. Wildlife travel, this area to protect wetlands. If you are elected, would you support a zoning overlay to protect this wildlife corridor?
This is one of those questions, as I read it, I just had more and more questions. Kathy just spoke about our neighborhood being pretty dark at night, and when I think about wildlife, I also think about whether or not that would include new lighting, no lighting. I also am wondering what kind of wildlife is having a hard time crossing our city, whether or not any of those animals are currently endangered. And I ultimately, while I think this is a unique idea, I think this is an expensive idea. I think imagining putting bridges across several roads within East Hampton to create a right-of-way for wildlife would be a really costly use of our city's funds. I'm not against the idea, if an animal rights group raised the money and wanted to see this come true, I would have no problem listening and possibly supporting it, but I would not use this as the use of funds at this particular historical junction. This actually feels a little fanciful compared to a lot of the things that we're dealing with in the city right now and where our budgets are falling short. So I just don't see this as a real viable option for East Hampton in the immediate future.
So preserving our natural resources, including the wildlife corridors across the city, I think is really important. I am not sure a zoning ordinance is the way to do that, and I would like to hear more about the pros and cons of doing a wildlife corridor before making that type of decision. I think we get back to the idea of having a diversified perspective and diversified experience on the city council, so that we can understand the potential unintended consequences that could result from having a wildlife corridor and a zoning ordinance for that. Like the bottle bill that led to plastics pollution, we are now, that we are now seeing, many, many ideas that seem like they're very positive sometimes have unintended consequences that have real, long-term problems later on. I think some of what we need to do for preserving our wildlife and our wild spaces is limiting developments and looking at the best way to grow going forward. Thank you.
Like most people, I very much support wildlife, and I want to find the most effective ways to protect wildlife. But I do think it's important to look at all of the options and to start by...
sometimes have unintended consequences that have real, long-term problems later on. I think some of what we need to do for preserving our wildlife and our wild spaces is limiting developments and looking at the best way to grow going forward. Thank you.
Like most people, I very much support wildlife and I want to find the most effective ways to protect wildlife. But I do think it's important to look at all of the options and to start by collaborating with the Conservation Commission. They've done some really excellent work over at 385 Main Street, planning for that development with the Castro Foundation. It will connect some of the tracks of conservation land, which is something that we should look into at other parts of the city. So these types of projects can accomplish multiple goals. They can preserve green space for trails and recreation and for wildlife. They can also increase housing supply. So I don't think that the zoning overlay is necessarily what we need, but I do think that we should be thinking about our wildlife. Thank you.
So again, there's a question I know a lot about and I'd love to talk to people afterwards about. My wife and I live in that corridor. We live at the end of South Street, right at the corner of South and Park Street. We frequently see deer coming through the yard. We see fox come through the yard. We see a bobcat. We see an occasional bear. It's not written by the person that wrote the question, but I believe the motivation for this might be, and many people may not know about this, but there's 12 acres of undeveloped property located between Westview Terrace and Park Street that is being marketed for development at the moment. It directly abuts property that my wife and I own. And in fact, the roadway to that development, if there was ever a development, would go right alongside our backyard. So we would definitely be impacted by it. I'd love not to have it happen, but I'm not the type of person that's gonna tell somebody that they can't do something with property that they own. What I would do is try to work with those folks and try to do something to preserve the corridor, such as clustering the development such that it could be more dense and then leave a portion of the property undeveloped and preserved. And to that end, I've talked with my wife that we own a half-acre property right at the end of Park Street, 197 Park Street. If it's motivation and incentive to make this corridor happen, we'd be willing to put this property in conservation restriction permanently. We bought it, never intending to do anything with it. It is part of the corridor right now and we're willing to contribute to that.
Thank you. The next question, we'll have Kathy starting. Where do you stand on trans rights and inclusion from student curricula to city policies?
I've spent the last 30 years advocating for some of our most vulnerable citizens in the state. No one should ever be bullied. No one should ever be discriminated against for who they are. Our state and federal laws protect everyone. Everyone should be held accountable to the same standard. There should not be special rights for special interest groups, whether that is because you're wealthy, work for government, or work as a police officer, or are in a marginalized community. Everyone should be held to the same standard and everybody should have access to the same rights. Again, no one should ever be bullied or harassed for who they are, who they love, what they believe, or how they vote. Our school curriculum should focus on core skills. Parents should have input into the curriculum and the ability to opt out their child out of any curriculum that goes against their own beliefs and values. Thank you.
Okay, Amanda.
Thanks for the question. So I believe that trans rights are human rights and human rights are trans rights. Full stop. So... It just turned off. Okay. Trans individuals have the right to work in any city position for which they are otherwise qualified. I believe that children should be taught from a young age in a matter-of-fact, straightforward way the difference between sex assigned at birth and gender identity. We actually do that at the school where I work. Teaching children when they are young is much more impactful than waiting until they have already internalized harmful stereotypes. We've been really successful with using developmentally appropriate read-aloud books and discussions with our kids. And in my school, trans, being trans, it's just normal. It's a part of a person's identity. And I do believe that's how it should be at all of our schools in East Hampton. I also believe that all people, including children, should be able to use a bathroom that matches their gender identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob.
I'd like to provide a very clear response relative to this question, which is that all people have the right to live their lives as they see fit without harassment or discrimination across the board. The city and the school department have the responsibility to adopt policies that uphold these rights. And then the city and the school leadership must make certain that staff follow these policies. I think that says everything. I don't need to say anything more.
Thank you. Tamara.
Okay, thank you. I have been consistent on protecting transgender rights in the entire time that I've been a city councilor, starting in 2017 with a resolution that affirms transgender rights. This last term, in 2025, when the federal decision to no longer have the term transgender as a legal term came about, I was in a position as a city councilor where my constituents came to me desperate and scared. We have several constituents within Precinct Five who identify as transgender. And these are the constituents that were coming to me and asking what protection they could expect at the local level if the federal government had abandoned them. I do not believe in voting for civil rights. However, the transgender group within Massachusetts is the one group, within my time, that I've seen have to endure that kind of a vote. And we wholeheartedly passed it in our city and within our state. And to turn our back on to transgender individuals simply enacting the life with the rights that they had already been afforded and they were suddenly figuring out how to deal without having a legal identity, I very much back the rights of our transgender individuals within the city. And I support this group wholeheartedly.
This question is, we're gonna start with Amanda. Questionnaire writes, "Precinct Four and Five include many working families and educators that are deeply invested in East Hampton School and neighborhoods. How would you, as a city councilor, if elected, gonna create connection between the city hall and families in our community and make us stronger?"
Thanks. I believe that having a city councilor who actually understands what it's really like for educators and families to function in our current world matters. We need that representation on council. Families and educators are incredibly busy and they're juggling so much. Saying up-to-date on city hall happenings is understandably hard. I feel I can be a person on city council that truly understands what it's like and can be a liaison between families, educators, and city hall. I actually, I know how important it is to have easy communication, fast, easy communication that is understandable. I've seen how Parent Square has made such a huge difference at the school. And I want to kind of hit the ground running, if I were to be elected, with similar digestible updates because this is something I do every day and I think it actually works.
So the connection between city hall and families starts at city hall. It really starts with the mayor. It starts with the mayor who oversees all the departments at city hall and all the department heads report to. I'm glad that we have three mayoral candidates right now, I believe, that are very well-suited to build a stronger relationship with families than might have existed in the past. I can work to help support that as being a pipeline between families and residents and the mayor. And again, reinforcing that it really is the mayor's job. So if there's an issue that somebody meets with the assessor and gets an answer they don't like from the assessor or meets with the city clerk, which I would never think would ever happen, and doesn't... Doesn't, there we go. Doesn't get great service from the city clerk, I'll be out there talking to people. I'll be part of that pipeline and pathway to get that information to the mayor so the mayor can respond to that. Again, I've talked about process. It's not my job to intercede in city hall. It's not my job to be talking to the city clerk and saying, "You did something wrong" or "The assessor did something wrong." I will intervene if I bring it to the mayor's attention and the mayor doesn't respond to it. But we do have to follow the process. We do need to let people do the jobs the way that they're supposed to do their jobs. So I can be, again, the conduit to city hall and help support the new mayor in building that relationship.
So to prepare for this question, I thought about what it was like to be a young parent moving into East Hampton with three of my five children and having to find a way to make memories as a family. In the early days, we relied on our PTO, which used to have a monthly get-together for families. So we could always go out as a family at least one time a month. And then, the next year, in 2008, we started to see a difference with our ECA funds and with the addition of arts as a valued department within the city. My kids experienced Bear Fest. My kids experienced cultural chaos. My kids experienced stories that came to life in the park with new signage. My kids experienced Du schools. My kids experienced so many things and all of them come down to your local city government, working in tandem with your school committee to make sure that the needs of the kids are met. And so while I would say maybe a teenager should come see a board and a committee, for younger families, I think the best way to invest in them as a city is to bring the free events forward that has created such a community feel in this small city. And that is very much the reason why my city chose East Hampton. And as time went on, that's why we stayed in East Hampton.
I've spent the last couple of years attending many city meetings every week, doing research on city issues and relaying that information through our East Hampton Active Citizens page with my friends. Our goal was to increase engagement and easy access to information, whether that was through the coffee chats, the pizza and politics, or our Facebook page and webpage. To give people opportunities to access information, to make informed decisions, and to be informed advocates and voters for themselves in our community was really our goal. I will continue these activities and expand on these for the Precinct Five and assist people to both advocate for themselves and when they don't have a voice or they don't feel comfortable doing that, advocating for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The next question, we'll start with Bob. How do you feel about replacing the mayor with a city manager?
This is a great question and one that I've debated with friends and family over the years, having worked under both situations. The bottom line comes down to it really depends on the person. A great mayor can be great for a community. A great town manager can be great for a community. A bad mayor or a bad town manager can be terrible for a community. Where I personally tend to lean is I tend to lean towards the manager form of government. It tends to be a bit more expensive because you're typically paying a town manager more than you pay a mayor because you're hiring a professional that many times brings more experience to the table. And that's generally why I tend to favor that form of government. You're bringing a more professional, more experienced person to the table. I've seen mayors sometimes get elected and come in and want to change everything on day one and they don't know anything about what they're doing at that point, whereas a town manager would never do that. I'll tell you, in terms of opinions, the town of Amherst, there are several people there that would take completely the opposite opinion and say they absolutely need to get rid of the town manager and put a mayor in because they feel less connected to the town manager than they would with a mayor. If they don't directly elect the town manager, they elect the town council, who then hires the town manager. So it depends. It could be good either way.
I support a mayor system as opposed to the town manager system. And it's based on a few things that I've learned about town managers versus mayors. Most importantly, a town manager or city manager would not be elected by the whole city. And I think that brings the element of choice out of our hands. I also am understanding that a city manager doesn't have to live within the city that they are the manager for. So I can't imagine having someone live in another city and not understand the culture of East Hampton, the items that make us all either feel really connected as a community or even the ones that are very divisive within our community. I think being a mayor, in addition to being a manager, also is someone who can shoulder a lot of these conversations and pivot a little bit and allow more constructive decisions and discussions. And so for that reason, I feel that the transparent process of electing a mayor as opposed to the more closed process of selecting a city manager would be the way to go for East Hampton.
I too would lean towards leaving the head of our city as an elected position. However, I am open to hearing about the benefits of a city manager if many of our citizens would like to discuss that issue. I try not to be close-minded about any topic. What I do believe is that our mayor's office needs to be more accountable. And we may need to look at how, regardless of whether we have a mayor or a city manager, how that office has greater oversight and how we, as citizens, have more control over what happens within that office. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not in favor of a city manager. I believe we do need to keep the mayor system. I think that a city manager that is chosen by a small, select few people really disenfranchises voters. The person is, there could be much more turnover. We can easily just fire one and get the next one. I think having mayors for a term and having them be accountable to voters is really important. I also think that with a city manager, we run the risk of getting into a situation where one city councilor is really buddy-buddy with the city manager and they end up getting a lot of power. I think it could potentially consolidate way too much power in the hands of far too few... And then the other piece is that I think it's really important that the mayor live in our city and be a part of our city. And it needs to be a way of life for them. We don't want this to just be a job where someone gets hired and then they go home to their beautiful house in a different city and don't live any of the, you know, stuff that we have going on. The mayor needs to be part of our city. So therefore, I don't want a city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Because we're doing really good with timing. We have time for the last question. Basically, it's gonna be a closing. Describe your broader vision for the city and how you will work to achieve that if elected. And we're gonna start with Tamara.
Okay, thank you. My broader vision for the city imagines this city five years from now, 10 years from now. And in the same way that I've seen since I first moved here, I look at things in terms of age. I'm a gerontologist. I study aging as a profession. And so as we look at the aging of our community, we're going to have, we currently have more people over the age of 65 in the state of Massachusetts than those under the age of 18. And that is not going to change. So in the future, I think we need to invest a lot of time and creative effort into how do we meet the needs of our older residents to make sure that they can safely maintain independence within their homes. This is a time in the upcoming years where I see an invested interest in making sure that our nonprofits in the area, as well as our schools and our government, that we all come together. and our government, that we all come together to think of creative new ways to make sure that we are all taken care of within our city. I love that this is coming at a time where my specialty is about aging, particularly as we're looking at the possibility of a new senior center. I have such a breadth of interest and experience in what goes into a senior center. And looking forward, I would really want to see how we could make that an anchor within the community, if the community sides that, as well as how would we create intergenerational relationships as a result of that.
I think that my broader view really looks at not urbanizing our city any further. We have a growing city that is becoming overcrowded. And that impacts our seniors and our children and our infrastructure, which is already having some difficulty being maintained. I would advocate for reviewing what is currently happening in terms of growth and determining whether the data that was used to determine whether we needed more buildings was accurate and what they used for a dataset made sense. For example, in discuss, in reviewing the homeless population and the underhoused population, the dataset included young adults that lived at home with their parents as being potentially homeless or underhoused. I don't think any parent would consider their child living with them homeless. The numbers are skewed and I think we need to take a hard look at whether we need to build as much as being proposed and what is also in the horizon. We all, many of us moved here because this was a small semi-rural city and I would like to help maintain that. Thank you.
So I'm really tempted to just say a little bit about what Tamara said in terms of young adults who are living with their parents, not being unhoused people. So I grew up here and most of my friends and my husband's friends and my own sister were not able to purchase houses in East Hampton because it's far too expensive. And they wanted to be here in East Hampton. People who grew up here really do want to come back and, and have families here. So my sister, and she'll kill me for saying this, but she, she lives in my mom's basement with her two kids living upstairs. She wants a house. She's someone who, we need more housing for those people. Yes, they have a place to live. My mom is wonderful, but we don't have enough housing for everybody in our community to stay when they want to. So my vision for East Hampton is a community where my children in the future, if they sew shoes, can buy a house, settle down with their families, go to Grace, have their kids go to great schools, have our natural resources like Nashuaing Pond and the parks be very vibrant, have the vibrant city life and the stores. I want that for the future. And I think making sure that people are welcome and that housing is affordable is a really important first step.
I think, as I've said before, East Hampton, it's a great little city. It's changed and adapted a lot in, in the 35, 34 years that my wife and I have lived here. It will, there we go. It will need to change and adapt in the future to meet the changed needs of the city and society. It can't remain stagnant. We need to continue to adapt. But what will be key to identify those core values that we believe in and try to make certain that those core values don't change with the other change that happened to the cities. And identify those affordability, good schools, opportunities for everyone, being good environmental stewards, maintaining a great arts and culture community and a number of other things. We need to try to preserve that in some manner. That said, it's going to be difficult. We haven't talked about it a lot, but I expect the next couple of years from a city budget standpoint is going to be challenged. We've already seen some of that. There's a hiring freeze on right now. Healthcare costs are going to up. So it's, there's gonna be a lot of pressure. And what we need to do is to try to find the most efficient way that we can run the city to try to mitigate those costs as much as we can and deal with the financial pressures that we're likely going to be, to dealing with. And I think that's partly where I fit in. I'm a bit different, but I know how to get things done. I know how cities and towns operate. I know how they could and should operate. And I'd like to try to, try to make that happen to get us through the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all our candidates for taking the time to express their views. Why don't we give them a big round of applause? And thank you to East Hampton Media for filming. And this concludes this portion of the evening. There will be a meet and greet if you have further questions. Thank you very much for attending.